Good evening. I'd like to call the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board meeting for April 17, 2023. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're going to move into the reorganization of the board. So I'm going to open up to accept nominations for chair. To let everyone know, you may nominate yourself. There's no need for a second as a nomination. I'll accept nominations.
I nominate Ken Martin.
I've prepared things to say if everybody wants to hear them. Sure.
Um, I'm nominating him.
Let's see if there's any other nominations. Are there any other further nominations? Okay.
Um, I'm nominating him because I believe his experience as an educator will be very helpful in working with administration. He has experience being chair of groups before. He was the large group chairman for the New Hampshire Music Educators Association, and he's currently the chair of their middle school district festival. And I appreciate his even keeled presence and humor, and I think that will be an asset to the board in running meetings and conducting negotiations.
Okay, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Five zero zero. So Ken's going to move over.
Lori, may I just say on behalf of the administration, thank you, Lori and Lori. Thank you for doing such an excellent job in the last year as chair.
All right. Uh, I am now going to open up nominations for vice chair. Uh, and I would like to make one myself for Lori Roth House to continue on as well to be vice chair for this next session.
I would also like to nominate Lori Peters, and I think that I'd like to open it up for discussion because I think she's done a wonderful job. That's no disrespect to you in any way. I just would like the discussion about who might be a great fit to happen because I want to honor the fact that Lori has done a really wonderful job this year, and I want that to be acknowledged.
I just want to say that Lori and I made a great team.
Absolutely.
Uh, and I think any person on this board would do an excellent job in any of these positions. Uh, and I think that I view as whatever whoever is sitting here is just a part of this five-person collective that I think has done really impressive work this year. Um, and um, my reasoning for voting for Lori Roth House is or for nominating Lori Roth House is just experience and institutional knowledge. Um, and just her years and years and years of dedication to not just education, but specifically Merrimack's education, leading school districts to be nationally recognized. So um, while I feel everyone would do an outstanding job in that position, um, I'm nominating Lori for those reasons.
Well, I want to say I agree with everything that you said about Lori. Nobody can take one bit of that away. She's done a wonderful job. And um, the the leadership of our of our board and our administration moving forward. Uh, the credit absolutely goes to Lori and to Lori for their hard work this year and leading us. My nomination is truly to extend that honor um, to Lori Peters, who has come in with a lot of leadership experience, who made a point to really learn the role. I watched her take many trainings. She she did a great job leading. She did a great job working hand in hand with Lori. To be honest, we can't go wrong. So I wanted my nomination to stand as an honor to Lori Peters.
So I'll call the question unless unless there's other discussion. Well, the question, um, all those in favor of Lori Roth House for vice chair? And then uh, is all those in favor of Lori Peters for vice chair? Abstentions? Yep. Vote is three, two, one. Lori Roth House for vice chair. All right. Um, moving on. Uh, commitment to board code of ethics. So just read this down here. Uh, as a member of the Merrimack School Board, um, I shall promote the best interest of the district by adhering to the following ethical standards and affix my signature to the same. You want me to just run down the list here? Cool. Trustworthy in responsibilities. I will always remember that my first and greatest concern will be the educational welfare of the students in the Merrimack School District. I will be accountable to the public by accurately representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress. I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and concerns. I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources and never lose sight of the fiscal responsibility owed to the taxpayers of the district. I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities or those of my fellow board members. I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain. I will be honest, fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will encourage and respect open dialogue and listen with an open mind while working for consensus. I will respect the majority decision of I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and district procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will undermine the district. I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement in activities the board has delegated to the superintendent, and I will inform myself about relevant educational issues. Leave all five members sign that. Moving on. Uh, we now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you. Uh, anybody wishing to speak publicly can step up to the microphone. Please state your name and address, and if you are a student, you no no need to state your address, just your name. So we now open up this portion of the meeting to public comment, although I don't see a microphone. Oh, up here. Okay, you can step up to the desk if there is a public comment. Seeing none, we will move on to the recognitions portion of the evening.
Uh, we have no recognitions this evening, but hope to certainly at the next very next meeting.
Uh, moving on to informational updates, starting with superintendent update.
We only have a few things tonight. Want to congratulate the robotics team. Uh, the first robotics competition that took place at DeWist Polytechnic Institute. Uh, the Merrimack team won the Impact Award, formerly the Chairman's Award. Um, this is the highest team award in that competition, and a team has won it two years in a row now. Congratulations to them. Uh, off to the district championships in Springfield and uh, off to the national championship, one of 10 teams. So we'll be competing uh, for awards in Houston, Houston, Texas. And so we congratulate our students and our advisors. Outstanding things happening. Uh, want to congratulate at the Merrimack Elementary School. Uh, the fourth grade has put on an amazing musical called The Pirates, under the direction of music teacher Teresa Burdette and art teacher Carolyn Conrad. Um, the teachers and students designed all the sets. Uh, they worked diligently. They performed two shows, one for the parents, one for the students, and both shows were excellent. And I have a picture of that activity to send around to you to take a look at. Just um, very exciting to see our students do that type of production at that age level. Uh, the Merrimack Theater Club is pleased to announce that sophomore Brianna Barlow placed first in the senior individual performance category of the New Hampshire National History Day Competition on Saturday. Uh, Brianna researched, wrote, and acted in a play she entitled Elizabeth, the first on the frontier of England's female monarchy. She designed and painted her own sets, wowed the judges with her stunning performance. She has won the state title and now will compete in the national competition in Washington DC this June. Just outstanding. So congratulations to Brianna. Um, you know, you probably mentioned the College and Career Fair that was held about a week and a half, maybe two weeks ago now. Well, nearly 300 families attended that college and career fair. And so we want to congratulate the guidance department uh, for that excellent, excellent opportunity for parents and students to be exposed to different careers. The well, and I just mentioned the robotics team, the quiz team uh, from Sarah Campbell at the high school. The quiz team competed at the state finals this weekend. The title was hotly contested, and in spite of scoring the most points of any team all day, Merrimack, the Merrimack team ended up in a tie for second place. A great ending to a great season. Uh, Reed's Ferry had their first annual bingo night hosted by the Parent Faculty Association. Over 260 people in attendance. Uh, staff and the parents worked diligently to make that a very successful event. During the last few weeks, students uh, in team eight-two at the middle school used the video editing program WeVideo to create movie trailers for a project about Westwood Expansion. On Friday, students self-nominated their trailers to the first annual eight-two film festival. Uh, four students took top honors, Chloe Holgate, Sam Demis, Evelyn Gill, and Noah Jolly. We congratulate them uh, for their outstanding work. Uh, want to recognize that um, April Dos Thornton's Ferry teacher has been nominated uh, this for the 2024 Teacher of the Year Award in New Hampshire. So she is a nominee. We congratulate her. And the Rotary, which you know is always working in partnership with our school system. They have been wonderful to Merrimack School District. Uh, they have received nominations uh, for the Excellence in the Workplace Award, and they will be honored at a dinner on April 20th. Uh, they are honoring Christie Moore, Cynthia Blanche Shut, who who is a kitchen worker at the JMU, which goes to show in every organization, particularly in a school district, everyone matters. Everyone makes a difference with a child. Bunny Saranita, you know, MHS music teacher, and Pat Zink, MHS special education teacher. So we congratulate all of them. Um, I had a chance to meet with CJ Ferrcano last week also. Uh, he is working on a just a wonderful Eagle Scout project. He is going to put planting beds, garden beds up behind the high school for students in the Pass and Get Set Program to work on, to grow, harvest, and hopefully in the fall, use in our food service program. So a wonderful young man, had a great, great meeting with him. Uh, he is going to be one of the great leaders in our country in the future. And that is it for tonight, and um, you know, so many students doing so many wonderful things with great mentors, those being our staff, and magical things happen and continue to happen in our school districts. So we appreciate everything they do.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. Uh, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to um, wish the students and staff and families a happy April vacation next week. I know we are in the final countdown here as we look to have a little bit of time to rest and recharge before the last push to the end of the school year. Um, I wanted to let the board know and the community know that after an extensive process of research and exploration, we are close uh, to making a final decision on a new assessment suite, uh, which will be used in our selection process for the Gifted and Talented Program here across the district. Um, we've been looking at a variety of tools to see which one or collection of tools that might meet our needs, and we have identified um, a test called the Cognitive Abilities Test, which is owned by Riverside Publication um, as our initial screener, as well as could provide our follow-up testing measure. Um, if you're not familiar with that process, students in the second grade, um, all of our second grade students take a screener. Um, and then those students that score within a particular percentile range are identified for additional testing, um, and then they receive Gifted and Talented Services K to four in a more pull-out model. Um, enrichment opportunities are also available. Um, and then seven through 12, it is more of an enrichment opportunity without direct services, just given the schedule and the other things that are competing for student need um, at those levels. So we are really excited to update this process. Um, if we had more time, I would talk with you about what we have been doing, but um, it involves paper and mailing away protocols and waiting months to get results. And we're really looking to make something that is a much more efficient and effective process uh, for our teachers and our students, um, and also to provide a more robust um, reporting measure for programming, um, not just for the Gifted and Talented Program, but for all programs. I also wanted to provide the board with an update on hiring. Uh, at our last meeting, I mentioned that HR Director Melissa Fazek and I went to a couple of job fairs. That was wonderful. We went to SNU and Riviera College and met um, some graduates that are headed out into the field. Many of them, it was nice. They made a beeline over to the Merrimack table, let us know that they were um, recent graduates and excited to uh, look at what we had available. Um, Melissa is such a skilled HR director. Um, it was just wonderful to see how she promotes the district, and um, was a great opportunity, I think, for us to continue our partnerships with local colleges and universities as well, because we really do want to be a landing um, spot for the best and brightest that are are joining the profession. As you know, we have two open positions on our district leadership team. We're in the process of vetting candidates for the new Director of Student Services, as well as Merrimack Middle School Principal position. Um, this past Thursday, a committee met with two candidates for the Student Services Director position, and we're meeting with a third tomorrow um, after school. We hope to identify a finalist or finalist to bring to bill by the end of the week. Um, and a survey went out last week to the middle school staff eliciting their feedback in their next building leader. And then you may have seen that a survey went out to our middle school families today, looking for the same information. Um, and Matt put that out via School Messenger and Facebook. So we're looking forward to getting as much information as we can from the community um, and who their next building principal will be. Um, in the interest of time, you know, with the April break coming up, we're hoping to set up the initial interviews Wednesday if we can, and again, uh, sending along a finalist or finalist to bill. Um, and we know how important it is to fill these positions, so we'll continue to keep you updated in this um, hiring process.
Questions or comments? What was the name of that cognitive test one more time?
Um, it's called the COGAT, but it's the Cognitive Abilities Test. And it's by Riverside Publication, um, has great reliability and validity. One of the things we like about it um, is that it has very strong equity measures across socioeconomic um, ESOL needs. It can be given in um, I think 50 different languages. So it really is a tool that is very versatile and very flexible. Um, it also does not have to be read out loud by second grade teachers. Right now, it is a primarily online, non-verbal tool um, that students can just take on their Chromebook. So it has a lot of pros and cons, and if you're interested in learning more, I could certainly invite Nicole Diggins, uh, the Gifted and Talented person to come and um, answer any questions you might have about it.
Great. Um, all right, moving on. Uh, Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just to let the board know that we continue to evolve the the master plan for the Merrimack High School campus and Master Cola Campus and everything kind of surrounding that area. Um, we have taken the good work that Keach Nordstrom has done, and we have uh, ported that over to VHB and other engineering firm. They're going to be starting to do a traffic study um, to get us some more data and in information. And they're going to be taking the the survey work that was already done by Steve Keach and look at um, around three different options to try and minimize the traffic at uh, at the end of the day when the seniors who drive leave. Uh, so that's one of our priorities. We also received um, some preliminary information from IC Read as far as burying utilities. I think that's something that we're going to put off into the future because of the cost of just burying the utilities, a million dollars, and it doesn't seem to to give us a lot of bang for the buck uh, as far as functionality goes. So we're going to put that kind of idea on the back burner, and then we're going to go forward with VHB, who's going to do a traffic study, and then they're going to come up with around three or four different uh, options for you to look at. I've already spoken with Rich Hendricks, the Chairman of the Planning and Building, School District Planning and Building Committee. That's going to be our first stop once we get something from VHB. And then I've already already talked with Nelson Disco, the Chairman of the Town Center Committee, because they're vested in having us put a sidewalk sidewalk along O'Gara Drive uh, connecting Babusak Lake Road to O'Gara, and then kind of going all the way around to McKell Wayne to make that big loop. So that's something that they're looking forward to. So that's going to be probably after we do the demo on Brentwood. That's going to be one of our first steps as far as the budgetary impact. The sidewalk and the paving of O'Gara Drive. And then we'll look at everything else and try and do a nice reconfiguration of it and kind of uh, make the front of the high school a little bit softer looking and give it more of a presence when you drive up. And put some signage in there. I don't know how many times people stop me in the in the evening when there's a baseball game. Hey, do you know where the boys JV bat? Yeah, I do. You have to go down this road over here. Can I get there from here? Yes, you can, sir. So we really need some signage and whatnot, you know? Not overbearing signage, but some informative stuff that looks good. So we're going to look at that too, because that seems to be a complaint of people don't know where where things are on the campus. So that's about it for now. Thanks.
Questions or comments? I know I am also one that gets lost on that campus, so I appreciate that. Uh, moving on, school board update. Uh, and I I'll start that off with um, taking a minute to thank the voters of Merrimack for coming out this past Tuesday um, and supporting um, the not only the teacher's contract, but also um, getting the budget and all of the warrant articles passed. Um, it's good to know that um, good work is happening here in Merrimack, and the town recognizes that, and they uh, recognize that by supporting our teachers um, and making sure they feel appreciated by passing this incredible contract that Lori and Lori put uh, helped put together. So um, um, and I think that's it for me unless there's other updates. Nope. School Board Representative update.
I just have a couple quick student council things, a lot of end of year stuff. So we just had a successful Spirit Week and pep rally to celebrate our winter and spring sports. And then first week of May, Senior Week tickets are on sale. We're going to be selling them every day after school until 3:30, and that is when we are selling them. You cannot get Senior Week tickets after May 5th. That is the last day you can buy them. And then Junior Prom is coming up. It's on May 12th, and it's at the, I believe it's Doubletree in Manchester. It's the one on Elm Street. I don't know. It's the Doubletree, okay. Um, and it is Las Vegas themed. And then we in student council are starting elections for all school student council. So this includes like student body president, student body vice president, our student body secretary, and the process of finding my replacement too. So we are starting all of that. Oh, and I also forgot to do the breakdown of Senior Week. So our Senior Week this year, we are doing a movie night on the field in a food truck on Monday. Tuesday is a kind of free day. Wednesday, we're going to Six Flags. Thursday, we are chartering the Mount Washington and doing a dinner cruise. And then Friday, we are doing the Hawk Walk where we get to go visit our past elementary schools. So that's all for me.
School Board members allowed to go on Senior Week trips?
I can ask if we need extra chaperones.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I do want to say one thing. I thought the Zoom day on Spirit Week was a great idea for Spirit Week. That was awesome.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on to old business. Um, Lori?
So Harley Hall and Bill and I have been working on the Adult Education Grant for the state of New Hampshire. Today, I think we finally finished the grant. It was been a wonderful process to um, to write the grant and to look at uh, the vision of what we have for our pathways director and what a difference it's going to make for our high school and for our high school students that have struggled and needed a different pathway. So it was um, it was really fun, and I was honored to be able to be a part of it, and um, it was great.
I just say thank you very much because your experience in this area has absolutely been invaluable, and not only your experience, but your passion. So thank you again, Lori.
Um, just one piece of old business for me, kind of um, backing up a little bit to what I was discussing about voting day. Um, this Thursday, Lori and I will be um, paying a visit to the Town Council meeting um, to discuss what our options are for possibly moving voting day um, to a little bit earlier. Um, just in the cycle, as many people know, um, voting happens almost throughout the entire state in March. Um, and we are in April, and there's lots of very good reasons for that. Um, however, for the Merrimack School District, one thing that we end up losing out on is that all of the towns that pass their contracts in March um, often get a chance, the first chance at new teachers looking for jobs, and some of the best teachers get scooped up right away. So um, that does affect our hiring pool. So we are going to be um, discussing, I believe, this Thursday to um, have that conversation to see what we can do to hopefully um, rein in some of those teachers that we don't get a chance at. All right. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, signing of the Merrimack Teachers Association Contract for 2326. This is exciting. I have it here in front of me. Do I get a drum roll, or do I just go ahead and sign that? Cool. Yeah, there's so many places to sign.
While we're waiting, maybe Lori Peters can talk a little bit about the contract process because we're very excited that this passed.
All right, so one of the things that was very exciting about working on the contract was that last year, the voters absolutely crushed it by supporting our teachers and fixing the pay grid so that we fixed a major disparity in our surrounding to our surrounding towns in our district. This year, we recognized that our teachers are really working hard, especially post-COVID. We also recognized that with eight to nine percent inflation for the last two years, their pay needed to be adjusted fairly, and that's why we've done a four percent raise for the first two years. And then we also did made some more adjustments to the grid. We came to a great negotiation on how many days in their contract they will work, how much professional development they will continue to receive, the support of the creative professional development and graduate courses and things like that will be continued as our teachers strive to enhance their craft as they work as teachers. And so what started off with uh, what seemed like almost an informal process because we just passed a one-year contract, actually turned into a lengthy process where we fixed a number of items in the contract, adjusted some of the language that needed to be adjusted over the last few years, and came to what I believe was a very fair representation of what the taxpayers were willing to support and what the teachers deserved.
Yeah, Lori?
And so I talked to Bill because um, I did order a banner to go in front of the middle school that will say something like uh, the Merrimack School District, the Merrimack Like uh, the Merrimack School District, the Merrimack School Board and the Merrimack Teachers, thank the voters from the town of Merrimack. Um, we, I will be paying for that just so the taxpayers know we're not going to uh, put a banner up and have you pay for it. Um, but um, I think that uh, this, we've had two aggressive contracts to try to get our teachers where they needed to be. We were not in good shape two years ago. And um, for the voters to respond to to our needs the way that they did, I think that we really need to show. Gratitude and show how much we appreciate that we are moving this school district forward.
May I just make a comment to that also that, you know, one of the objectives. Of a collective bargaining agreement is to attract and retain quality employees. We are already seeing. An increase in not only the number of candidates, but the quality of candidates also in this in this hiring cycle right now.
The word is definitely out and again, huge thank you to Lori and Lori for all their work with that. I know that was hours and hours. And hours of negotiation, so.
Well, and I want to thank the union as well, the M T A. They did a great job coming. They they put in just as many hours. They showed up every time we had a meeting and they were always just as prepared. So I want to thank them as well.
Uh, moving on with the get the let out program and Representative Bill Boyd.
I'm drifting. Excuse me. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, to the members and to uh, Administrator Olson. My name is Bill Boyd. I live in one thirty-nine Joppa Road in Merrimack and I am a member of the General Court. Representing uh, District Twelve Hillsborough, the great town of Merrimack. And it's been an honor and a privilege to um, represent you folks up in Concord. Quick aside to Mr. Chairman and Madam Vice Chair, congratulations on your elections. I wish nothing but success this year and I hope it is uh, productive and fruitful and uh. You are able to attain the goals that the community expects goals to be obtained through uh, through Merrimack School District. So thank you for your willingness to serve and your leadership. Back in two thousand eighteen, uh, state law was passed requiring childcare facilities and schools. To test their water fixtures uh, that could be used as a source of drinking water for lead. Um, the remediation standard was fifteen parts per billion. The Department of Environmental Services and if I'm quoting stale dated information. Please accept my sincerest apologies. Do not hold me in contempt. That's all I ask. Don't hold me in contempt. Um, they had found at least one outlet at at six of the schools here in town that had tested over. Um, and above the uh, during the last sampling period. As chair of the New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Advisory Commission back in two thousand eighteen, when I was just, when I was just a member, we approved. Uh, one point six million dollars out of this trust fund to be allocated to the Department of Education to remediate. Those particular fixtures and reimburse districts at a rate of fifteen percent, fifty percent. For whatever the cost it was to remediate that particular fixture. Um, just last week, um, at the behest of the Department of Environmental Services. Um, we have upped that to a one hundred percent reimbursement rate. And D E S has informed me that um, there's there's some gaps in terms as it relates to data in terms of. What needs to be submitted, but Town of Merrimack School District is eligible. For reimbursement for specific fixtures that have been fixed here in town. So part of. My um, request to present to you tonight is to encourage you to make application. Um, to get that reimbursement. If if we're expending taxpayer dollars to fix this and we have an opportunity to. Recapture, recapture that money's back through this grant program. It really is a unique opportunity. To take, take advantage of that. Um, and then the one last thing that I did want to bring to your attention is um. There's a website, get the let out, get the let out N H dot org. Not only are we covering the cost. At one hundred percent of reimbursing the fixture replacement. We do have the um, there's a limited amount of money where we can fund paying the lab cost. So if there's any additional schools that need to have their water tested for lead. I would encourage you to go to that website in being proactive about getting, getting as early in the queue so that the district can be reimbursed. For testing any additional fixtures in our schools. That that may still have lead available. So um, I just wanted to make the district aware of this. Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Administrator Olson. You know, as chairman of the of the of the commission, we've, we've done a great job over the last. Seven years that I've been on the commission, having an impact on a variety of of water issues as it relates source water development, infrastructure, contamination issues. Helping uh, helping communities get over the hump to to close the, close the financial gap on projects that they've been doing. Um, being able to leverage the fund in this particular regard and having a real impact. With uh, with schools in the Granite State that I hate to say this, that are still dealing with uh, with lead, lead and drinking water. I mean, it's it's a shame unfortunately, but I'm really happy that the commission saw fit to do one hundred percent reimbursement. Getting lab costs included in that particular process. So there's a really a great opportunity for. Um, the Merrimack School District to look at what we've done in the past. Do you qualify for reimbursement? If so, let's get in line to to get reimbursed for the work that we've done. If not, let's be proactive and move forward so we can take advantage of this. So. That's really the nature of strictly informative. I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity for the Town of Merrimack. And um, I will do my best to answer any questions if there are any.
We'll open it up to questions or comments. I feel, I feel like it's a no-brainer, uh, especially the water issue being what it is. Um, I, I think this is absolutely something that we should be. Digging into and getting, like you said, getting first in the queue. I know in my own school, we have, I teach in a newer building. My building's twenty-five years old and we tested positive for lead in the water. So.
Scary.
Yeah, scary. Um, so.
I'd like to thank Representative Boyd for for coming here and all his hard work up there. Uh, to to make sure that the reimbursables are there. The federal guidelines is point zero one five uh, milligrams per liter. But state of New Hampshire is point zero zero five milligrams per liter. So they have a more stringent uh, requirement than the the EPA does. We've been doing this, Mr. Boyd mentioned that it was law in two thousand eighteen. Is that correct?
Well, there was a state law according to the information given to me by D E S. There was a law in two thousand eighteen. Then that was amplified. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, it was House Bill fourteen twenty-one. Representative Rong was a co-sponsor to that bill.
Yes.
That that lowered, that lowered that. Point zero zero five and that. That uh, that passed the House on on a voice vote. I mean, that that should tell you.
Makes sense, makes sense totally.
To quote the chairman, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, even though the the law was two thousand eighteen, I just want to assure the board that we've been doing this since two thousand sixteen. Because there was a a memo from the then Commissioner of Education that strongly suggests that we do this. So when you get a letter from the Commissioner of Education, back then, it was like strongly suggests means you better do it, right? So we've been doing it for quite some time and uh, right now we've worked it out. So we have um. We're below the point zero zero five milligrams per liter in every single fixture. It's posted on our website. That was as of March of two thousand twenty-three. I had a wonderful conversation with Leanne Atwell up there at uh, D E S. And uh, she's excited to be working with us. She told me about what you said with the, the, the real money is in the, in the testing. You know, so that's really important that we get reimbursed. So there's a program that you actually join. So we're looking into joining that as soon as we can. So we'll definitely be taking, taking advantage of those monies, just like we did with P F O A's a long time ago. We spent a hundred and twenty grand on P F O A treatments. Uh, well before the M V D did anything. And then when the D E S had a thirty percent reimbursement. We get reimbursed for the work we did back in two thousand seventeen or something like that. So we got around thirty-four thousand dollars from uh, D E S. So thank you very much for the work you're doing. Thank you very much for the grant monies available. We appreciate that. And if there's money out there, we will take it.
I know you will. I know you will. And and I appreciate the thanks, but it's an honor and a privilege to represent the community and I mean that sincerely.
Representative Boyd, I want to echo what Matt and everyone else said is just thank you for your advocacy for the health and safety of our students and staff. Not only in Merrimack, but across the state because it's not easy work, uh, long hours and we appreciate it very much.
You, you have a, to, to echo a great word that Assistant Superintendent Doyle used a couple of minutes ago. You have a very robust legislative delegation that is very cognizant of what goes on in this community. We're the largest community in the state and there's a reason why. Um, people are coming to Merrimack because of our quality of life, our schools and and how we govern ourselves and how we treat each other. So. So you've got, you've got a good legislative delegation that's working hard to making sure that the values that we represent in our community are brought forward up there. So. I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down and sharing this information with us.
No, my pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Scratch Tucker for me, will you? And say hi to mom and dad.
Right. Moving on to um, our technology director, Jason Pelletier. And uh, the bring your own device presentation, B Y O D.
Thank you. So in uh, in two thousand twenty, uh, to um, address remote learning. We gave every student uh, access to technology mainly through uh, the use of a Chromebook. Um, right now we have grades two through twelve. We have um, one device per child. And from grades five through twelve, we actually have a one-to-one program where they're allowed to take it home. And um, having that district provide a device, it's, it's really important, right? Uh, the, it's important to the educational experience to the students because it provides all learners with a consistent and standardized experience. Um, and then by standardizing on that experience, we can also help um, give educators targeted P D. We can give tools that are usable amongst all of the students. Um, we can integrate, we can increase reliability, uh, security and guidance in the building. And building in more engaging and interactive lessons. The one-to-one and this device per child, we've already committed a lot of time and money. And investment in our students and staff and infrastructure because of that and um. While B O, B Y O D has its advantages in areas. Moving forward with only using a school issued device um, has far more advantages and we would like. To, we'd like you to consider only using these school issued devices during the school day. And a couple of reasons for that is uh, using a district-supported and managed device opens up more time for learning. Uh, the Chromebooks are designed to be instant on. Uh, granted, a lot of, a lot of devices are very quick to get in and log in. Um, that's not the case if you look at if uh, other devices, older devices. But with the Chromebook, everybody, every student in that class can have an easy on um, experience, which opens up more time for teaching. Instead of waiting five, ten minutes possibly for a student to get in, if there's like an update or whatever, everybody can get right on. And um, and ensure that all students are ready to start that lesson as soon as possible. Uh, also making sure that every student that's on a similar device, it helps streamline the classroom environment. Um, and teacher can create lessons and experiences that will be the same for every student. Having a standardized device also helps us service students' needs quickly and efficiently. The Chromebooks are extremely easy to fix. There's only a few components that actually fail them because they really don't have a lot of components in them. Um, we can, we can manage just a few models and we can have those parts on hand. Uh, there's thousands of different devices on the market and it's really hard for students to be like, hey, this is broken or this needs to be fixed for us to be able to. Uh, service them quickly and efficiently. And sometimes we might not even be able to help them at all. The, the Chromebooks can um, can also be managed to ensure that students are using district-approved software. Uh, this is important because state of New Hampshire has a govern, has governance legislation. Uh, it's RSA one eighty-nine sixty-six or or more commonly known as House Bill sixteen twelve. And it says that we're required to keep student and staff data safe and secure. And that's really hard to do on a B Y O D device. We can't, we can't really, uh, if people are using software that steals that data. Um, or minds that data whether they know that or not. Um, it's, it's hard for us to manage that and we really can't manage that. But with the Chromebooks, we can say these district-approved software. Um, extensions are allowed on there and other ones are not. Most of the software that's used in classes, not all the classes, but in most classes is web-based. Um, and Chromebooks are designed to surf the web safely and securely. Um, for classes that use specialized software, we already have computer labs and we'll continue to have computer labs for. For the access to that. And for some of those classes, we already have um, some take-home devices for students. Um, if they need to like in uh, like web design classes and whatnot. Also, online tests like S A Ts, SAS, STAR, iReady, um, some other software that we, um, testing software we use. They all are taking on that Chromebook. So as a student has that device that they use every single day and now they're testing on that device. Um, it's just a better environment and anything that we can do to help students succeed in those tests um, is very important. And the other part to that too is some of these tests have very stringent uh, restrictions and guidelines for. How a device is going to be set up for testing, like no Bluetooth or no, no, no software X or turn these, these settings on. And with B Y O D, that's, that's extremely difficult to be able to do and do it reliably for students. The other side too is that Chrome O S is extremely secure. Um, and it's resilient. So it was designed to, they designed it to uh, be able to be patched on the fly. Um, and we know that, you know, there's more and more threats that come out every day. We hear about ransomware attacks and and data getting. Um, stolen and whatnot. So the Chrome O S, it's, it's fast and secure for when there is a vulnerability that happens. Because nothing is one hundred percent safe. They can um, go and patch those and we can roll out a lot of those patches quickly. And then also on to that standardizing on specific hardware, uh, we can ensure that soft, that um, the, we have the most reliable and compatible. Network connectivity and compatibility. Uh, when we do upgrades and we look to go forward with technology, we can, we can test it on. Everything that we have and ensure that it works and make sure that the choices that we um, that we do make. Uh, we'll make it so that all learners and all devices can get on and have a safe and reliable connection. Some of the data that we have is right now, our high school already has over ninety percent of students, they picked up their device, right? Um, the amount that are using it might not be nineties, might be like around fifty percent. Um, but right now about ninety percent of students actually have that school issued device in their possession. Um, when we purchased the Chromebooks, the latest, the latest model that we have. Um, it was designed to provide ten to fourteen hours of battery life. So even as they age out, they'll still be able to last an entire school day. And then also the Chromebook model that we're using is about two hundred percent less expensive than an adequate Windows device. So we do save um, in that realm too, as far as having a device per child, we will be able to save money going with. Um, with a Chromebook. There's other districts that are Chromebook one-to-one. Um, so Bedford has a program for Chromebook one-to-one. Wyndham does as well. Um, I do know that their high school is standardized on Apple, but from their um, middle school and center school, they are on Chromebooks. Pelham also is Chrome, is one-to-one and Salem is also uh, Chromebook one-to-one. There's a bunch of other districts that are doing it. Um, as well, these aren't just the only ones, but uh, there's, there's definitely some schools that are out there that are, that are using it. And are very successful with it. So for your consideration. We're looking at um, possibly starting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year with um. With your consideration to allow only using a school issued device during the school day and sunset the ability to bring your own device. Uh, moving this way creates a consistent standardized learning experience for all learners. and allows us to provide effective, unique, personalized, immersive experience for staff and students. There's accommodations that we can still, that we will still obviously make. A lot of the Chrome Chromebooks that are out there, we can we can accommodate for them. But we also have other accommodation methods and devices that we can use. We're not saying students can't bring their device at all, you know, they can obviously use it for whatever they need, like after school or before school or if there's special projects and whatnot. Obviously, we we understand that. But for the most part, for the day, we would like to go to just using that school-issue device. So thank you. And any questions that you have, I'm more than happy to.
We'll open it up for questions. Go ahead, Laurie.
Before I ask my question, let me ask a data point. When students, particularly in the high school, turn in a short story, a paper, a poem, are they putting that up in Canvas?
They, and I can't say for every for every student, but for the most part, every every classroom has a Canvas page where they are submitting that homework.
Are they being taught how to download to a flash drive or to an external hard drive? Because they won't have access to that when they graduate.
That I'll have to check to see what the what they do as seniors to to move on. Unfortunately, I don't have that.
Because I'm supportive of the one-to-one in the Chromebook, but my concern is, and because this happened to me, I I saved to two iClouds. Microsoft Office is now forcing you to save to a OneDrive instead of on your hard drive. And several of my documents were corrupted on that OneDrive. And so I think we need to be training our students that you need to be, you need to be saving to an external drive. Because it's something still can happen in the cloud or, in this case, or like in my school's case, you have a school email and that's your access to that cloud. When you graduate, you don't have that access anymore.
Right, exactly. And and having that exiting procedure is really important.
Agreed.
I'll I'll make sure to look.
Thank you.
And and that kind of, I was gonna piggyback off that. Have we looked into utilizing the, I I forget the official name, but like the Google platform, which offers the Google Drive? We are a one-to-one school and we are a complete Google school. And Google Drive offers infinite storage and students, all of their work through their Chromebook gets saved to Google Drive and they have access to it. We allow them, I think, a year up till after they graduate. And of course, with that, you can include the Google, all the Google stuff, documents, Excel sheets, Classroom. And I, again, I'm super supportive of one-to-one. It makes complete sense to me to be looking at this Google platform, which is really built for these machines. Has that been discussed at all?
It has, Ken. So we just sent out a survey to our staff about a month ago, and we digested the information about their experience with with Google Workspace for Education, Gmail, things that they've, if we decide to pivot to that, especially because of the Chromebooks, right? The the main thing is what's best for students and them being on a on a Chromebook in a Google environment, Canvas can integrate with Google. A lot of a lot of new teachers that come in or new new employees that are in education, they're going to Google. So trying to get like, what do you feel like you'd be, you would need to be successful in getting their feedback from all of that? And for the most part, most of that info, feedback has been very positive. We had a lot of pro-Google. We have a lot of people that are like, whoa, we've been Microsoft. So, you know, let's make sure that we have training and and what does security look like and and all that. But we're definitely looking into that right now and and have a few plans around training and doing like a Google Summit, having teacher leaders and everything like that. I teamed up with with Amy Doyle and and we're we're definitely looking at that right now.
Could I make?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Laurie.
Go ahead.
Okay. Jason, what's the first conversation we had when you you joined us?
The very first conversation.
Can you fix my printer?
That was revolving revolving Google, Google Classroom and whatnot, right?
Yes.
So this is something that Jason and I have been talking about ever since he he got here. And because Google integrates so nicely with Power School, it seems like a natural fit, right? So I know we have all my files, and I've got a lot of files, believe me. And they're on the H-drive, which is backed up on the server and everything like that. But I also, from time to time, pull them off the H-Drive and stuff them on the 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 Google Drive. And then I'll also place them on the OneDrive, too. So and then I've got an external drive that I use that I plug in. Because I know what you're saying, Laurie. The thought of of losing anything off that magnificent 20-year body of work that I've created on the computer is just, I I just can't, I just can't deal with it. So this is something we've talked about for a while. I'm going to continue to discuss and see how comfortable the staff is moving in that direction.
So all I was gonna say is I appreciate it's April, it's a blinker before the turn, so we can, you know, start working on the transition. I think because of the RSA 18966, that we have to have secure systems, like it makes just total sense. It's, we're following the law. So I'm totally in support of of moving forward.
Well, I'm gonna be the first person to say something I'm concerned about. So I have kids in high school and one that's was is old enough that did not ever get a one-to-one, never accepted a device. And then one who did. And I think there's some of those kids that fall into that category. I'm thinking particularly of our upcoming seniors, like there currently are juniors. They're the ones that, you know, before COVID, they didn't have that one-to-one option. So a lot of their parents invested in a device that they are used to using. And last year, when we kind of sprung this on them, they all freaked out. I mean, I don't think, other than asking, that was maybe the thing I've gotten the most emails about, you, right? And I understand it. And I think to ask our seniors to do it in their last year is asking them to switch a whole, everything they're used to. Like, to me, I was like, I, I mean, literally to my own child, I don't think this is that big a deal. Oh, it was a big deal. And then I thought maybe it was my own child, and then I started talking to other people and they were like, whoa. I was wondering if there could still be an opt-out for the seniors. I feel like the the sophomores, the current sophomores that are going to be juniors next year, I would think most of them probably haven't used their device all the time. But I think for those incoming seniors, a lot of parents invested in their device. That's the device their kid is then going to be taking to college the very next year. And so for one year to have them learn a whole different system, I'm I'm speaking up for I for I know a lot of people when I say I really would love to see a senior opt-out with a parent signature for just next year and then to go 100% to this. I I agree with every single thing you're saying. I understand the rationale completely. But I think we're bridging the gap between where we have been and where we need to go with this one class full of kids whose parents have already invested in a device that they're very used to using and to switch to a Chromebook. Is a lot maybe to ask, just a thought.
And I think that that's a very appropriate and and reasonable request. I think that we can talk back with building administration. I don't think that anybody's gonna really have an issue with that. That makes, that definitely makes sense.
Yeah, as you said, I think that's a very reasonable transition plan.
And I'll I'll add to that, too. We, and when we implemented it seven years ago, we actually cycled it through. So the freshman class was the only class that got Chromebooks their first year. And then they kept theirs into their sophomore year, and then we fed them to the next freshman class and then so on and so forth. So those seniors and juniors who had bought beautiful devices didn't have to go out and reinvent the wheel on this new device. So might be an option to think about as well as cycling them through. And then by the time they're seniors, they get, everyone's got one.
That said, of course, any senior that needs a device would have that available to them, right?
Absolutely.
I feel like it's a win-win. And and some some may just want to make the switch, whatever. I just I just think of those parents that reached out to me and said, whoa, don't do that. My kid is freaking out. Don't do this to them. You know, maybe we could make an exception for just our our seniors.
Can I say, one of the reasons why we asked Jason to come at this point in time is because I think the timing was was not correct that we engaged in last year, that some parents had already gone out and purchased devices. So we wanted to bring it to you now to avoid that same type of situation.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to say something really quick. Sorry. Um, I have to agree with Ms. Hardy, especially and with Mr. Olson. The timing last year, it was mass panic among the seniors and even last year's incoming junior class a little bit, but especially the seniors. And I think that's something you'll see this year because a lot of the juniors are already looking at college stuff. And like, a lot of us, like for me personally, I liked all of my college stuff being in one place and that being the only place that I have to go for all of it because it's a lot to manage. And so I have to say, I think that it could be beneficial for next year if you're considering the everyone using school-issue devices, letting the seniors do the opt-out. Because if they had already started looking in depth into college and planning for that, it's a lot to manage the going back and forth, especially like if you're sitting in class and you're working and you only have your Chromebook with you, but then all of your college stuff is on your personal laptop, like you can't, even if you have free time, you can't look at it or work on it or anything. And then again, I was express, gonna express a tiny bit of concern with the Google, which I know that you guys do a lot to like implement things. And you set up a lot of systems for support for students and teachers. But that's something, I think there would need to be a lot of student support because we are taught Microsoft. At least my grade started in grade five. And I know it's even younger now because they have more access to devices. So I think that the implementation implementation process with Google in a Google system would just have to be very careful because I think it would be a lot to just spring onto students, especially the older students who have been taught Microsoft for 10-plus years at that point. Just a couple of things to consider.
No, very valid. I I really do appreciate that. And the senior opt-out makes so much sense. And when we're looking at that implementation, right, for for Google, you know, the Microsoft world is not gonna be going away anytime soon. And we're gonna make sure that we, you know, that we are very careful with that and take all of that into consideration. So I really appreciate that.
Additional questions, comments? Great. Thank you for this.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, moving on. This is exciting. Demolition plans for Brentwood and Student Services Building.
I feel like we should have a confetti cannon.
Yeah. Or just a cannon.
I actually feel bad that I missed the opportunity to bring a confetti cannon.
Well, maybe we can arrange for something when when we start the the job. When we, when we first started this, we were talking about, you know, Brentwood, that's the obvious building that that needs to go. The red building that we've owned for a few number of years now, that primarily as a as a structure, doesn't really suit us even with a massive renovation, which would probably cost more than building a new central office from scratch. Because the space as it stands right now just does not work in any form or function. And it is an exceeding amount of disrepair. And you you can see it just kind of dropping, you know, bit by bit. Every single day, there's something different on it. So we already got approval to take that structure down. We we hope to do that. Probably, I think, we may wait until at least after the seniors go or till the end of the school year just so we have a clear site to work with. And I had talked about, you know, perhaps $300,000 or something like that. Well, we bid it out and we've we got a couple of bids. Got some very good bids, around three or four. And the cost of to take down the red building is gonna be around $53,000. That includes the foundation, the slab, the mechanicals, everything you could imagine, all gone. And then the existing hole where the foundation is on the first part of the cellar, first part of it has a little cellar to it because there used to be a garage there. And so that's would be broken up and everything would be filled in. So it'd be a clean, fill, solid subsurface that we could do anything we wanted to. If we wanted to leave it grass for now, we could leave it grass. If we wanted to pave, we could pave it. So that's the price for the red building. While you're at the red building, you've got another building that's a little bit showing its age a little bit. The Blue House, which is special services. And working with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent here, perhaps we can do a little relocation of those people in special services to another school where we have some room. And if we did that, we could look at taking that building down also. Now, that building is a little bit more expensive. That's at $58,000. And the reason why it's much more expensive is there's around $44,000 worth of asbestos in that building that needs to be remediated. That's why there's no one downstairs, because that's where all the asbestos is. That entire basement area is tiled in nine-by-nine tiles and over the, and underneath, over the tiles, where you can't see it, is this, I think it's an ugly green carpet or something like that. It's all rippled and whatever. And so it's not a space that's inhabitable for office space or anything like that. And it hasn't been for years. So we just want to, you know, give this a little bit of visibility and just kind of offer it up for your consideration to kind of think about. But while we have all the big toys there, for $111,000, we can get rid of both buildings. And I know if you bring back the demo company again at a later time, it's probably gonna cost you 15,000, you know? Because a lot of it is general conditions. Any construction project like that of this magnitude, it's all the general conditions. It's getting all the the workers there, it's getting the the materials, it's getting the equipment, it's getting the trucks, it's getting the safety fencing. It's 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 all that. So that that's a significant cost. So for $111,300, you could get, you could get a two-for-one price with both buildings gone. So it's something for your consideration. We're not looking for any answer tonight. I'm not gonna, you know, that wouldn't be proper. But, you know, for the next meeting or whenever, let us know if you want to discuss it again, and we can definitely discuss it. But it's something that we can do, and I believe we do have space for the Special Ed Director and the two administrative assistants and the outer district coordinator that inhabit that that office right now, that we could move out into the schools. And so we could be that much further along on our master plan physically by getting rid of those two structures and just leave the lonely little greenhouse on its own. So we have a place to stay for now. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
So I was just gonna say, so the Special Ed building was Walter Ferrioli's home. And he went to Merrimack High School and graduated in 1976. He used to just walk right across the park to let to his house. So this is a little history, but I think that part of our master plan and being a part of the Planning and Building Committee for all those years, they would be very excited that we are going to move forward because it's something that they've had for a vision for a very long time.
Yeah, I agree. It's a step. And it's good to take a step that's a visible step.
Big step.
That all of a sudden people realize that, okay, this is indeed after 27 years of talking about it, is is going to happen sometime in the near future. We are looking at, with with Bill, looking at some creative ideas for central office. So but we're gonna hold those in our back pocket for now and leave you on the edge of your seats. But yeah, no, so I'm I'm excited about it. I think I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction to kind of realize the goal that we've had for a number of years. So, thank you.
And can I just reiterate, as a person who has been involved with a lot of school construction and demolition, that price for raising two facilities is extraordinary. And, you know, in talking with Matt, it appears to be a vendor who is a responsible and responsive bidder and one who is familiar with the size and scope of similar projects. And so we could not go wrong with raising those two facilities.
Questions or comments? A fundraising idea of like getting the community involved to destroy it is not, that's not a possibility?
I think we discussed that with Primex, our insurance carrier, and they kind of advised against it.
All right. Just trying to save money.
It would be fun, though.
Uh, okay, moving on to review and approval of the document entitled, quote, Fiscal Year 2024: General Assurances, Requirements, and Definitions for Participation in Federal Programs.
Yes, this is a document that you receive every year, that the school systems approve every year. It's generally our assurances to the federal government that we will comply with all fiscal regulatory conditions associated with any grant project and any federal statute that Uh, and any federal statute that applies to health, safety, well-being, uh, environmental protection, et cetera. Uh, that we will do our, uh, due diligence from a fiduciary perspective and it is a standard form. That all school districts, in order to be eligible to receive federal funds, has to sign and submit to the Department of Education.
Questions or comments? So we take a vote on this? Is that right?
Yeah, I think it's probably safest to say that you approve the statement of assurances and then we'll sign it.
Alright, do I hear a motion to accept the document, uh, FY two thousand twenty-four, general assurances, requirements and definitions for participation? In federal programs? Second, Jenna? So that was moved by Lori Peters, seconded by Jenna. All those in favor? Five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to date for June twenty twenty-three goals meetings. I gotta get my calendar, hold on. Right, um, so after a super productive meeting last year, I, I think this is something that I know I'm looking forward to. Um, is getting together again to review our goals and then look ahead and see what, um. What we can improve upon and what we can continue doing well. So. Let's see, looking at June. Wanna just open this up for discussion?
Well, let me be the difficult one. Uh, June seventeenth is the only day I have open. And that's already a problem.
You say that's the one day you have available?
That is the only day I have available. June third is our school's graduation, the tenth and twenty-fourth, I'm out of town.
Uh, seventeenth works for me. Well, seventeenth is a Saturday.
Oh, it's a, it's a Saturday.
Yep.
It's the only Saturday I'm available.
We do, last year we did it during the week.
Yeah.
Which is probably better for administration, cause they're already here. So I think we did it on a Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, not a Friday, but it was Amy's first day of work, so.
Was.
It was, I walked in, I wasn't even working. I think it was before July one.
That's true, yeah, you were there. Uh, I'm out of school as of the twentieth and I'm available. Any day, really.
Yes, and keep in mind our last day of school is the twentieth, teachers work through the twenty-second.
I assume this would be a similar day in terms of hours, like sometime, you know, like eightish.
So we wanna try the twenty-sixth, that should be like a Monday.
So I'm gone from June twenty-third to July ninth, I'm out of the country.
So. June twenty-second.
That's the last day of school for them.
But that's possible to.
Yeah, it's possible, cause.
Because, you know, students won't be in, staff will be in and.
Yeah, they'll be cleaning off.
And we, we began, if I remember correctly.
We were in the library in, uh, in the middle school.
Yeah, didn't we begin in the early afternoon and we went through like until.
We thought it was gonna be like ten hours and it was like five or four, five, I think.
And we can play with the hours too, right? Assuming it's like, you know, about ten o'clock at night.
Sure.
Yeah, cause I have an eleven o'clock flight that night to Scotland.
And not all spaces in the school buildings will be used on the twenty-second.
How's the twenty-second look?
This doesn't have anything to do with the date. I was just wanted to sort of put out there for consideration. We don't have to like. Discuss it or decide anything now, but I was wondering about inviting, um, a representative from the budget committee to participate. In our goals meeting this year. As just an idea I had.
Well, twenty-second going once. Going twice. Sold. Alright. Uh, moving on to summer meeting dates. Alright, so I think our last official meeting on the calendar is the nineteenth, correct? And we usually schedule, is it one for July and then one for August? Excellent. Um, we, do we wanna keep it on Monday? I assume that's the option for this room, right?
Yep.
Alright, um, July third being right before the holiday. I'm not sure if people are traveling. I'm gone the seventeenth. But all other days are, all, the other Mondays are open, the tenth, the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first.
I'll, I'll be gone that first weekend of July.
Sure. How does the tenth look? Good? There it is. Alright. And August, we have, um, the seventh, the fourteenth and the twenty-first. How does the fourteenth look?
Fourteenth looks good.
That's good, cause we can give you an update on enrollments and staffing at that point in time. Any unanticipated occurrences.
Feel good about the fourteenth? Great. Meeting is on August fourteenth. Any other new business? Seeing none. We move on to policies and the approval of non-educational surveys and questionnaires.
Yes, that, uh, policy is in your packet. And, uh, that is. For your approv, approval tonight. And once again, the red is, uh, the review that has been. Proposed by our legal counsel.
And we are voting on this one tonight.
That's, that's correct.
Correct. Alright, uh, questions or comments? Looking at you, Naomi.
And, and whoops, we have had, I don't, we have had no, uh, public comments on this.
Correct.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. My only question or comment doesn't actually have anything to do with the policy itself. It was just a procedural question. Um, because I think we introduced this one, uh. Last time and we're approving it this time and we had been doing three and I actually don't have any problem with shortening that and having one and then doing it. But again, I just wanted to make sure that it was a conscious decision, decision and not, uh. Not an accident.
Yes, Naomi, I think like at one point in time, we used to do three reads and then we went down to two reads. And then sometimes we went back to three reads, but I think we agreed to do two reads. Uh, so there was a vote at one point in time, five zero zero, to do two reads, not to do the third. So.
That's, yeah, like I said, it's totally fine with me. I just wanted to make sure it was, um, on purpose and given that. We didn't have any discussion or much discussion about this one last time and we haven't heard anything from anyone in the public, I think it's appropriate to, uh. Go ahead and pass it.
Yep, thank you.
Alright, ready to take a vote?
I'll go ahead and make that motion to make it official if you want.
Let's do it. Uh, do I have a second? Second by Jenna. All those in favor of accepting the non-educational surveys and questionnaires policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero zero.
Thank you.
And can I just make one comment too? On, um, on this survey one, it would be, I think it would be really great. I know with a lot of them, we post them. But for all teachers maybe to get this or have it posted someplace in all the schools so they understand that this is our survey policy.
Yes, we'll send this out to all, all the staff.
Right, I know that, but I think this one is like one that a lot of teachers do surveys on the side, that here's the policy.
Alright, moving on to the approval of minutes from the April third, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I make a motion to approve April third, twenty twenty-three public minutes.
Motion by Lori, sec, do I have a second by Jenna? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes pass, five zero zero. Moving on to, uh, the health trust, oh, so acceptance of gifts and grants under five thousand. We just voted for this. Um, health trust is, um. Is this five, three thousand dollars?
Yes.
Giving, gifting to Merrimack?
Yeah, so we have, uh, before you tonight for your review and potential acceptance, a gift or grant. Uh, grant from, um, health trust. Uh, they're our health insurance provider of three thousand dollars. This is affiliated with our healthcare cost containment committee of which we have had that in place probably for a good fifteen years now. Um, it helps out with, uh, renewal rates and, and looking at trends and trying to promote wellness in the district. And so this three thousand dollars from the health trust is going to be gifted to us to, um. Have health and safety coordinators attend a full day of, uh, health and safety training sessions at, uh. Um, the health trust, either virtually or at their facility in Concord, so. For your consideration.
Questions or comments? Lori?
I make a mo, motion to accept the health trust Merrimack School District for three thousand dollars.
Do I have a second? Second by Jenna. All those in favor to.
Wait, can we have discussion first?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I totally am behind this, but I just need to make a note. It says griffs at the top of this form and I don't know how many forms. We have looked at that say griffs. We might wanna change that, cause we don't need any grifting.
I didn't even notice that.
Yeah, it's funny, sometimes you, you look at stuff forever. This is probably, I'm gonna go back when this form's on my computer. I'm gonna look back at the original form that was created, I don't know how many years ago and see if it says.
How many griffs have we accepted?
Jeez, too bad. I can't believe I'm still here and I'm not in stripes and handcuffs.
It's okay. I've read my dissertation so many times and I didn't catch something the other day and I'm like, really? How many times have I read this? It's okay. Just wanted to make sure we got it correct. So I'll call the question.
Alright, Lori calls the question, uh, to approve the health trust to Merrimack School District. For three thousand dollar gift with the removal of the word griffs from the language, uh. And Jenna seconded it? Or no, we have to re-vote, right? Cause you made the motion?
We've voted yet, no.
Alright, cool. All those in favor? Five zero zero, motion passed, or the gift passes, I should say. Alright, uh, consent agenda. We have educator and administrator resignations.
There is a fair amount in your packet for us to talk about tonight, so we will start with, um, the teacher administrator. Teacher and administrator resignations and retirements, starting with teacher retirements. We have, um, seven teachers that have decided that at the end of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, this will be their last and we would, I know you joined me in thanking them for their dedication. Uh, to this, to the students and the community, starting with Tracy Prince, a grade six teacher at J Mews. Joanne Talbot, school nurse, also at J Mews. Joan McMahon, science teacher, Merrimack Middle School. Deborah Barker, school counseling director, Merrimack High School. Cheryl Riley, math teacher at Merrimack High School and Jan Moynihan Cooney, English teacher at Merrimack High School. We also have several teacher resignations, uh, to accept for you to consider and accept tonight. These are folks that are moving on to different opportunities. Andrea Hatch, elementary teacher at Master Cole Elementary School. Anissa Cody, special education teacher, Merrimack Elementary School. Katie Finken, speech teacher at Reed's Ferry School. Michaela Selepa, Selepa, um, at Thornton's Ferry School. Kayla Lanigan, SEL support specialist at J Mews. Richard Loftus, in schools interventionist at the middle school. Mitchell Bull, language arts teacher at the middle school. Sarah Gom, Gomet, special education teacher at the middle school. And Brielle Lapiana and Leah Sutherland from the school counseling department at the high school. And finally, um, it's with mixed emotions that I ask you to consider the resignation of Adam Carragher. Um, member of our district leadership team as he looks, um, to pursue an, and then opportunity. Um, leading another building in another district.
And this is something we vote on? Yes, alright, do I have a motion to approve the teacher and administrator?
I make a motion to approve the teacher resignation as a retirement.
I have a second. Second by Jenna Hardy, all those in favor? Passes five zero zero.
And can, can you accept the administrator one?
I will accept the administrator resignation, uh, as well. Vote for that one again. So do I have a motion to accept the administrator resignation?
With great regret, yes. I will make a motion that we accept Adam Carragher's resignation.
Do I have a second? By Naomi, all those in favor? Five zero zero.
We have a few, uh, teacher nominations coming forward. These are both for new positions. Heather DeLuca will join. Uh, the Thornton's Ferry Elementary Community as an elementary teacher and Denver Green, uh, will be our new physical education teacher at that location.
I have a motion to accept the teacher nominations. All those in favor? Aye.
Also in your packet tonight is the administrative team comes forward for your, uh, review and consideration. Um, the slate includes all of the current administrators with the Merrimack Middle School position being vacant as well as our director of student services.
I make a motion that we accept our administrator. What contract?
Slate.
Slate.
Seconds, all those in favor? Passes five zero zero.
And then finally, we have all of our teachers that are on a continuing contract, um, that is a thirteen page document. Um, so I won't read all of those, um, but these are folks that are coming across the district that, um, we're renewing for the coming school year.
So I will make a motion to, uh, accept the. Continuing. The continuing contract, yes.
And I second it?
All those in favor? Five zero zero.
In the coming weeks, as, um, Bill mentioned, we are really excited to have high quality candidates coming forward for our open positions, so. Um, hopefully we will continue to bring, um, great candidates for you to consider to join our community. And then finally, under the consent agenda tonight, um, is your approval of the new literacy coordinator role description. These, these are the folks formerly called the language arts coordinators. Um, and so that was in your packet last week and so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the role description. Uh, but it is, um, for your approval tonight.
Do we have any questions or comments? Then I will, uh, make a motion to accept the role description for the literacy coordinator formerly language arts coordinator. Do I have, oh, sorry, do I have a second? Cool, uh, all those in favor? Five zero zero. Great, alright, moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? We were scheduled to have a health trust, uh, containment committee report, uh, and then it got postponed. Although the main talking point was what Matt discussed tonight about the health trust gift for three thousand dollars, so. That was my report to report. So thanks, Matt. Um, no other committee reports, moving on to correspondents.
I did have one correspondent of a concerned parent and, uh, I sent them back through the chain of command.
Any other correspondents? Alright, moving on to general comments from the board. Go ahead, Lori?
Um, I just wanted to, I, I don't have all the names, but, um. Last school meeting, there was a public forum for all the candidates running for town council. And it was set up by high school students. Um, Matt Brown was the coordinator. Uh, but it was really well done. It was televised throughout the town and. We got a lot of positive comments that our high school students set up a forum so people in the town could learn about candidates. So I, I'm not sure of all the kids, but I just know that he was one of them.
Did a great job. Um, any other comments? Go ahead, Lori.
I just wanna reiterate what you said at the beginning. I wanna thank everyone who came out to vote. And participate in the, the privilege of voting. I, and wanna thank the Merrimack voters. For passing the budget and the roof warrant article and the teacher contract. All of those were very essential. To us this year and we really worked together as a board to bring the absolute best we could to the taxpayers this year. So I wanna thank everyone for passing those warrant articles.
Uh, and then my, uh, only comment, and I know Bill had sent an email about it. Um, we had seven Merrimack High School band and chorus students participate in the, um, regional all eastern music festival in Rochester, New York. Um, I don't know all of their names off the top of my head, so I'm not gonna try and, and mess up somebody's name. Um, but the process to be. But the process to be accepted into that is pretty rigorous. You have to make all state first and then you have to re-audition. And you're going up against students from not just New England, but also Pennsylvania, New York and New Jersey. And we had the fact that Merrimack got seven students into those groups is just another testament to the incredibly strong program we have here. So those students absolutely should be getting many celebratory messages from their community because they did us proud. I think they're home now, too. I think they finally got home. All right, if there are no other comments, we will open the floor up to public comments on agenda items. Hello? Make sure you turn on the microphone. Yeah.
There we are. All right. So I don't normally like talking because you guys do a pretty good job up here. But Jason, oh, sorry, Finnegan Hatad, thirty six Breck Drive. What are people going to do? Jason came up here and gave you a presentation on eliminating bring your own own devices to school. And I just wanted to kind of go over that presentation because there seemed to be some mischaracterizations of a lot of the claims. So the first one that he made was that Chromebooks tend to be faster. That was interesting because he gave the presentation on a Windows device and the personal devices that he uses are Windows devices. School Chromebooks are amazingly efficient in terms of battery life and price, but they are not the fastest devices. They take quite a long time to boot up. They take quite a long time to get into working. That can be five, ten minutes out of the forty-five minutes you have per day. I know that a lot of students that bring their own devices that are able to be a lot more successful when operating with PowerPoints, Word documents, reading, whatever we need to do, by being able to log into their school accounts, their personal accounts, and being able to instantaneously boot up. The second thing that he went over was fixing Chromebooks and the ease of fixing Chromebooks. And I'm not going to disagree with him there. But what happens if you bring your own device and it breaks? You switch to your Chromebook, which every student has, right? Because we still all have a Chromebook, even if we're bringing our own device. If your Chromebook breaks, that can be a forty-five minute, an hour and thirty-minute block, which can be two classes where you have to go down to the tech ad office and you hope somebody's in there. You get it fixed, you go to the library, you get one of the loner devices and you have to log in. And so I see a lot of students who have an issue with their Chromebook, which tends to happen quite a lot or have their Chromebooks die, right? And so that's another thirty minutes out of the forty-five minute period that they aren't spending on working. Chromebooks in terms of testing policies are also still required, right? So it doesn't really matter if students are bringing their own devices for general working. I know we have science testing for the juniors tomorrow and we just had SAT testing. They're still required to bring in their Chromebooks and set those up ahead of time. And they have administration do that, which means for the days prior to those tests, they don't have their Chromebooks. Whereas if they bring their own devices, those are things that they're able to use while their Chromebooks are being set up for state testing or other types of tests. In terms of securing the network, we have a bunch of Windows devices that we use, whether that's in people like Ms. Foster's room, Mr. Shaughnessy. Ms. Foster does three D modeling and animation. Mr. Shaughnessy does videography. They both use Windows laptops. So in terms of Chromebook security, I think that's something to think about is we have all these different devices still accessing the network, regardless if they aren't specifically student devices. Another thing that was brought up was personalized learning and the fact that students would be able to tailor learning to a singular device. But I think it's important to remember that all teachers use Windows computers. They aren't using Chromebooks. So it's very hard, and I see this often, where a teacher will design a lesson plan to be used on a Windows device, which is what every teacher has in their room. And then it goes to a Chromebook and there ends up being a myriad of issues with those things. So just a couple of things to consider when you're thinking about banning bringing your own devices to school. I know a lot of students, we would take them, it would take them longer and make them less efficient during the work that they normally have. And we always have that backup option to bring our Chromebooks because we have a wonderful school district that gives us, gives everybody Chromebooks and ensures they're able to work. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm a lot closer to you. Heather Robitaille, forty-five Springfield Circle. I just want to echo the sentiments, thanking our voters for passing the teacher's contract that our vice chair Roth House and board member Peters negotiated with the MTA to pass, which I think is so important. And I think it's a testament to the work that the board and the administration has been doing in Merrimack. We've seen the results in our students, the recognition that has happened at these meetings. We have had state championships. We've had a number of things we've seen our students in their civic engagement, bringing our town together, which is just phenomenal. I am on the edge of my seat as far as the master plan. So I will be here to see what comes in your cards, but it's just a thank you to all of you. Thank you to the members of our community that are so engaged and all of our educators that make this possible. Thanks.
All right, seeing no one else coming up for comments. Do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Do we have a second? Jenna seconds. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Good night.